Here we go.
A little hair too.
Okay.
We'll be there.
A little hair too.
Oh, right. We're gonna open the select board meeting.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Or the record.
Apologize for the flag. Apologize to the flag. We're gonna open up the assessors meeting. It's the first. And Jim, you're on.
Okay, um, the reason I'm here tonight is, um, we've received, uh, application for sixteen applications, uh, for exemption, one hundred percent exemption at every property that Mr. Butler has purchased.
Every single one?
That's what I said, yes. All sixteen that he's purchased over the last year and a half. The total amounts to, uh...
Do we have a handout so we can look at it? They're all ours.
That's, that's, that's one...
They're, they're, they're carbon copies. You can look at it. One application, they're cookie cutter, in other words.
Yeah, yeah.
These are all...
Except for the map and the lot, they, they...
But we were given a two-page letter...
I was not given the letter.
Oh, well, I gave it to an A.
This is the previous, the previous time, are you talking about?
Is it through one in here?
It seems like we had one time a while ago when we wanted to have, um, we wanted to have, uh, a tax exemption on one or two properties.
Two and a half weeks ago, we were, I would send something.
Oh, I don't know.
And that letter... It should be in the package because...
Well, the letter was addressed to, um, I think...
Carol Dennison in the Lubec Board of Selectmen.
Right.
And it has a breakdown. So you, you didn't see it, just like?
Oh.
I, I wasn't given a copy of this letter.
I'm just saying, instead of having all of this...
Or the breakdown, or any of that data.
I'm sorry, the name didn't give it to you. I went the next way.
You know, I have a breakdown here that I made.
It's one page. Do you want me to make a copy of that right now for you?
No, you don't have to. I, I know there are sixteen properties.
And here they are in one page.
They're right here. The total tax, uh, losses, I, I tallied it up. You know, we know what the, uh, assessments and the revenues were. And, uh, these are submitted under, um, and I'll read it to you. Under, uh, five oh, um, five oh one C. Every one of them has it in it, the basis for it. And I'll read it. It's called Schedule A1, Cops Hook Shores Inc. All the parcels have been incorporated under one entity called Cops Hook Shores Inc. And, uh, it says, uh, Schedule A1, nonprofit articles of incorporation. So this entity, not Cops Hook Shores Incorporated, is a nonprofit, uh, corporation. The corporation is organized and shall be operated exclusively for charitable, educational, and scientific purposes within the meaning of Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended, the code, including but not limited to the making of distributions to organizations that qualify as tax exempt organizations under Code, Section 501(c)(3). Notwithstanding any other provision of these articles, this corporation shall not, except to an insubstantial degree, engage in any activities or exercise any powers that are not in furtherance of the purposes of this corporation. Without limiting the generality of the foregoing, the purposes of the corporation shall include but are not limited to acquiring, conserving, and managing land for purposes of promoting and conducting environmentally responsible land stewardship, conservation, silviculture, that's the grazing of trees, growing of trees, recreation, outdoor and conservation education, and similar activities with a goal of preserving the natural heritage of such land and surrounding regions and enhancing the public's awareness and appreciation of the natural environment and its sustainable use, enjoyment, and conservation. Now, that's the federal code. And the federal code gives way to Maine's code, which is pretty much an echo, a ditto of the federal code. And, and the rules for, uh, Maine's code is set forth, and I've shown you folks this way back, is set forth in Maine Revenue Services Property Tax Division, Property Tax Bulletin Number Five. This is not open space. This is not tree growth. Those are classified land use programs, right, that permit other folks to use this land, the land. This is tax exemption for benevolent and charitable institution. And, and, and this is Maine law, which is quoted, uh, pursuant to thirty-six MRS, Section six fifty-two. This is a document that's created by Maine Revenue Services to teach me and, and guide me in terms of evaluating these types of applications. And it says, "Reference: Thirty-six MRS, Maine Revenue Services, Section five, six fifty-two, paragraph S, A, B, C, November thirteenth, twenty seventeen," replaces July fourteenth, twenty sixteen. And it says, "Maine law, under thirty-six MRS six fifty-two, provides property tax exemptions for certain property of institutions and organizations. The parameters of the exemption have largely been shaped by case law." I'll read that again. "The parameters of the exemption have largely been shaped by case law." So this bulletin reflects case law for, for, for applications by organizations like this that have been challenged in court to the Supreme Court, the Maine Law Court of Maine, and have prevailed in, in terms of the defendant. The plaintiffs have been the towns, and there is, every one of these is depleted with a case law that decided in favor of, of these folks.
So what they're saying is that this is just like the case law. They're, it's a similar argument. What my concern...
It's exactly the same argument.
Yeah. Okay, but my concern is that he is saying that they are official nonprofit, right?
That's what Cops Hook Shores Incorporated is.
Well, but here it's an LLC, which is a limited liability.
Yeah.
Which is a little different than a nonprofit. That they have an ability to make a profit as long as somehow it's put back into the, whatever they're doing. So I think we need to do some investigating in terms of whether they are in fact a nonprofit or else.
Well, they are five oh one C three, or they wouldn't say they would.
So they're not an LLC.
I think that might just be the heading of the current letter, not in respect.
It says, "Cops Hook Shores Incorporated."
Jim, I would love to put into the record the letter that was given to the selectmen that should be read, so the public should be able to hear what they, their argument is.
Sure.
It's just one page.
Yeah, I've never seen it.
So, well, then, I'll give you a copy. "We are writing to let you know that the Butler Conservation Fund will be submitting applications for property tax exemptions and reductions where allowable on various properties we own in Maine, including our properties in Lubec owned by the Cops Hook Shore LLC. We wanted to give you advance notice about this prior to the application submissions, and in their defense, they did. Three weeks ago, we were given this, and we all have it now. According to our records, the tax exemptions will reduce our tax burden by approximately forty thousand dollars annually in Lubec based on previous tax bills and currently available information. Please refer to the Appendix A for a complete list of our properties." So, um, you'll see that in their enclosure, there are all the properties. I actually went to the tax maps and yellowed out all the properties. If someone wants to look at that, I, I did do that. "The Butler Conservation Fund is very sensitive to the fact that our reduction in property taxes will have an effect on the town's revenue. As you know, we have contributed to several projects to benefit the town in the past, including five thousand to the basketball court, fifteen thousand to start the engineering for the safe harbor, and thirty thousand, seven hundred and fifteen to improve the airport. We have been happy to contribute to the projects above, and we expect that there will be future opportunities where we will be able to help support the town with additional project-specific funding. You will be pleased to hear that the BCF, the Butler Conservation Fund, just received notice from the Maine DOT that our proposed bike lane project along Route one eighty-nine has been approved. This will extend the existing paved shoulders from approximately Prossneck Road to Red Point Park. This is estimated to be a five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar project, of which Butler Conservation Fund will be paying over two hundred and eighty thousand. In fact, the Butler Foundation will be putting up the entire amount upfront to make sure the construction happens in two thousand and nineteen, and we will be reimbursed in two thousand and twenty for half of the project cost. The Butler Foundation sees bike lanes as critical to the growth of outdoor recreation in Lubec. We have begun a study to assess potential costs for continuing the bike lane all the way into town in the future years. As part of our commitment to the Lubec community, the Butler Foundation mailed out the first contribution check this week of a ten-year commitment of a thousand dollars per year for the Lubec Fire Department. We have also sent out the first check of a ten-year commitment of one thousand dollars per year to the Town of Lubec for road maintenance through the Public Works Department. To date, we have put almost three million into cleaning up and improving Red Point Park and building our equipment depot and office headquarters for Cops Hook Shores. We expect Red Point Park will be open to the public this July, and we hope the town will embrace it and enjoy it. We will continue to find ways to improve public access to our various properties and encourage members of the community to go out and explore this wonderful asset in their backyards. Besides encouraging outdoor recreation, our properties also maintain and improve public access for clambers and fishermen to continue their livelihood. We have spent eighty thousand dollars at our Hutton Beach property to improve the road access and parking specifically for clambers and fishermen who rely on Cops for their source of income. As part of our mission to conserve, protect, and encourage public access to Maine's natural beauty, Butler Foundation runs the Cops Hook Shores outdoor educational program. Last year was our inaugural year. We had almost four hundred and fifty students visit from schools surrounding Cops Hook Bay. We spent thirty-six thousand on the program last year and expect to spend a similar amount this year with hopes to expand the program to more schools. We believe strongly in the future of Lubec as a world-class outdoor recreation destination. Our hope is that the investment we are making in Lubec will attract new visitors to discover its beauty and hopefully put down some roots of their own, thereby growing the town tax base over time. As our properties are improved for public access, we hope to attract a modest two to three percent of visitors from the largest outdoor recreational area, Acadia National Park. If we are successful, the tax exemptions we are pursuing should be well offset by new families investing in homes and businesses of their own in the area. Please feel free to reach out as always with any questions, Gilbert and Carl. So that's there, there, and I think that the town deserved to hear what they had to say. Now, that's up to, um, Jim, you cannot have the floor. That was the last.
Okay, so what, uh, when this package came in, after I read aside, um...
Well, that's looked like a lot of work for you.
What I did was tally this up. And it comes to, uh, at, arguably, you know, the ratio on these, they, they spent five point four million dollars on these properties. They were assessed at one point seven million. And that's about a thirty-one, thirty-two percent ratio. And so at that ratio, at that, at that level of assessment, the revenue's loss were thirty-eight thousand, okay, forty thousand. At the mil rate, that would amount to, um, yeah, a million seven, if the mil rate at twenty-two eighty-nine equals thirty-eight thousand. What, what I did was, like, I kind of gained it, and I said, "Okay, what if, what if the fair market value is, that's what they pay for it, five million, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars? That's the fair market, one hundred percent valuation. At thirty-eight thousand, over ten years, that's three hundred and eighty thousand dollars that went that way, if nothing changes. That's three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars." You know, I, I don't know those numbers that are in that letter, but I don't think over a ten-year period, they, they kind of equal that, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. If the, if the valuation of this town, and, and at some point, the town will be reassessed, reevaluated. So let's assume it was reevaluated the day before this came out. And let's suppose at a hundred percent valuation, the five million, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars that they spent. Everybody following me here? Let's, let's take a look at what the lost revenue would have been if, in fact, it would have been, um, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars over ten years, would have been a million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand. So what, what I'm saying is, is when the town gets reevaluated, that land would have been raised up considerably, from thirty-one percent ratio to a hundred percent. You folks following me?
Yes, I think that's...
And so the opportunity, the opportunity, I, I, I did this to look at the opportunity cost. What's, what's this worth in terms of exchange of value, real value, real, real dollars, if the town were to up its valuation, um, so that it could, uh, more effectively assess taxes, okay, across the population? And, and it was just to get an idea of, because I read an article in, uh, the Island newspaper about, uh, what's, uh, Dear Isle? And they just had a, a similar type thing. And, and their valuation is at a higher ratio, a hundred percent. Like, and, and they lost a hundred and twenty-five thousand in the, you know. So anyway, that, that's the story on that. And then Renee and I discussed it, and we called the town attorney, Sally Daggett. We kind of went through it with her. She asked that the board, um, approve sending every one of these to her, even though they're cookie cutter. She wanted to look at every one of them, verify their, their legality, make sure, you know, there weren't any techno, technical errors, and then let's see if, perhaps there is some way we could challenge it. I told her we would have to run it by you guys. I, um, let me put it this way. You may find some technical issue, a book on the page might be wrong or something like that, but a, a clerical error is not gonna carry the day.
Yeah.
Not gonna appeal.
So are there any towns that have won? So that's the thing. I think that was...
No.
So if there are no towns that have won, we may be throwing money...
Because, you know...
I mean, it's two, two fifty an hour.
I asked, I asked Sally...
And going to court is thousands.
Did she know of any towns that have won? And she said, "No." She wasn't prepared really to answer my question.
Yeah. And I have no problem, I mean, I think they've done a fairly comprehensive letter. However, it's always good when they put a letter like this to tell you how much that they've spent on Lubec. And, um, but some of this, I know anybody who had just bought property would have invested in that property because it becomes their property. What I, what I would like to know is five thousand for the basketball court, fifteen thousand for the safe harbor, that, those are things that I can easily say work for the town, okay? Except maybe the airport, because people that are gonna come in and out of the airport are probably gonna be going to Butler. So it's almost self-serving again. However, um, going forward, and I don't even know if we can put this in as a caveat, that they do something similar on a yearly basis to offset the incredible tax loss that we, you know, that...
I think it's well-meaning, the request, but I think it has to come from them. I don't think it can be, it can be just...
Yeah, yeah, I think that they need to do some good, big promises that...
I think they left room for that in their letter, because it's been, we did, actually, the harbor master and I went out and looked at the upgrade on Hutton Beach, because I thought that it seemed, I just got this letter just after before I was out, and there's this really nice road there. It is gated off right now, which I think they don't want it to be ruined because of the, the rainy season or the melting season.
Yeah.
So there are things that need to be looked into on, on behalf of the clambers. But your...
The point, and I, I called Karen, their attorney.
Yeah.
And I asked, I wanted to talk to their CEO, Carl Carl. And, uh, basically what I told Karen is, I said, "You know, I'd like for him to call me back," which he didn't.
He did?
No, he did not.
He might, he's out, he's not...
And he was out of country.
He is out of the country.
But the point I made to her was that all of these amenities that are being added to the town for the benefit of the town are centered on what I would call outdoor, um, exterior, uh, activities and things that require a certain degree of athleticism.
Yes.
And I reminded her, "I want to tell Mr. Carlton that the average age of the people here is sixty-eight."
Yeah. That's not to say they are not active or that they cannot participate, but I agree with you.
Yeah, they're not gonna get out and ride bicycles.
Yeah, and, and they're not all gonna be kayakers.
They're not gonna be kayakers, people. You know, the, the impact here is, is measurable, and I told her, "You know, there are people here who have fixed incomes, and they're being left out of this equation," in my opinion.
And I agree.
They're gonna decide whether they're gonna eat dog food...
Yes.
Or pay for their pills.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's really annoying.
Well, could I just go back for a second?
I would really like the rest of the select board to say something.
I'm saying it is a select board.
I'm, I'm talking about Jason, Joanne, Dan, they need a chance to speak.
Okay.
So I think we should start with Jason. I would like to...
I wanna look into it.
Pardon me?
I wanna be able to look into it.
So you want, um...
I want to have Jim ahead, I wanna look into it.
Well, you mean, you wanna read, read the applications yourself? So do you want this table for the...
I can do two of the others.
I mean, it is a lot, a lot to take in. We could table it till next time.
I mean, basically...
But what about going to a lawyer? I don't think it's, are you a fruitless because...
I think it's a waste of time.
There was all the towns that lost. Joanne, I agree with you there, Jason. Joanne?
You don't want me to stop, but I, I will.
You just gotta say something.
Any, and I've known a lot of five oh one three Cs out there.
Right.
Every, I'd say ninety percent of them are all self-serving. Every one. They're in it for a reason. A lot of the reason is to defer taxes, and that is putting it off on somebody else. Okay, he's saying that he's done all this for us. Um, the airport, I believe, is self-serving of itself. Maybe the basketball court, yes, thank you very much, Mr. Butler. I asked him, I begged him, when Mr., um, I think Allen Smallage, then...
Ari Hari.
Yes, was here, about the bus issue at school. Our kids were begging for transportation. Never heard a word, not a word. He could've gotten a eighteen-passenger bus for, for forty thousand, maybe.
Did you talk to him directly?
No, I did not.
Yeah, you...
No one talks to him directly.
I'd like to meet the man.
So go ahead.
But anyway, I do not go along with any of it. I don't. And I am, you know, okay, Red Point Park might be beautiful. I find it hard to believe that they've spent over three million dollars down there. I find it very hard to believe. Um, the, you know, the two hundred and eighty thousand for, um, uh, you know, the bike path, that's self-serving for him. It goes to Red Point Park, I gotta tell you something, it doesn't come to town.
Every decision they made, and I, just, you know, it seems like every decision they've made has been to promote his dream for Lubec, his dream.
Well, I've heard this man had dreams in other areas in Maine, too.
Right.
And I've heard that they've fallen to fruition. Well, you know what? As far as I'm concerned, I've got three more months on this board. I'm passing this off to somebody else, but I would tell you right now, I do not like it. I don't know what he's, I don't, there's something not kosher.
Well...
But he showed me a bus for the kids at school, I might change my mind.
Okay. Thank you, Joanne. I, I, you have to speak. Now, we'll go back to you, Rachel, you get the last word. Dan?
I take a different tact on this whole situation. I don't think we should spend any money on a lawyer.
Well, we agree with you.
Right. I think we, I, I look at a perspective of what he wants to do and what he can do with the town and the benefits in the long run. I look at the basketball court, yes, thank you very much. I look at the airport, knowing the way government works, two or three years from now, we'd probably be stuck with the tab to get it up to speed and up to par, and we would've been paying for it. So the fact that maybe it appears self-serving, but there's some people here who, I think, over the next ten, fifteen years, will want to be using the airport, and it'll be beneficial. And I kind of see with the way things work, he probably saved us a dime by upgrading the airport. I think the bike path, um, obviously being, you know, partially funded by the state and getting the work done, and his intention to go all the way through town. Quite frankly, if I'm gonna spend millions and millions of dollars of my money, of course it's, to an extent, it's gonna be self-serving, and deservedly so, it's his money.
Right.
I think as a town, we should embrace what he's doing. I think it encourages environment, um, good, healthy lifestyle. I think it stands for a lot of things that the town can then represent. I think it'll bring people here, um, as opposed to being somewhat stagnant. And I think if we encourage at least that maybe we meet with his organization or himself on future dates on some sort of quarterly or annual basis, so that we continue to work with him and maybe ask for things, um, it would be more beneficial from that aspect. So I'm a proponent to what's being done, and I, I like, I like the vision that I see where it's going.
Now, I would like to say something, but Rachel, you want to talk, so I'm, I'll let you go first.
Well, it's connected with kind of Joanne and Dan, so let me just finish it. When we talked about things that they have done supposedly for the town, I would like to see something a little more tangible. We were discussing earlier today about the school budget and how they are looking to get a new furnace, which is going to be a huge, a huge amount. And I had suggested many years ago that they look into geothermal. Well, they rejected that because it's an initial outlay of a lot of money, although in the long run, they will ultimately pay nothing because you don't take fuel. So that is something where I think Mr. Butler could do a great deal of good that would be directly connected with this town. And having said that, maybe going forward, we have certain ideas that we could present to him that we couldn't otherwise bump, and that he could help us with. And I would like that to be an open dialogue.
Thank you. So, um, my feeling about the Butler Foundation and Cops Hook Shores is, is mixed. I, I understand where Joanne's coming from, and I, we would love to get a new school boss and the money. It's, it's hard to look at a letter that says they spent that kind of money in this town when we are so needy for so many things. But I'm also really on the same, the same track as Dan. I, I've spent a long time on the marathon committee eight years ago. We talked about a healthy lifestyle, we talked about a vision for Lubec, and as you can see, esports gone toward Bar Harbor with their little fancy candy shops and their art things, and they're great. They got the Pirates Festival, people dress up, they've got all kinds of things going for them for the tourists. But I, I personally... But I, I personally, as the chamber president in the past and as select board chair now, have always seen Lubeck as a healthy lifestyle, walking, hiking, because that, those were our assets. I went to so many meetings where we would have to list, what are the assets of Lubeck? And this was the, these were the assets, the many, many miles and miles of, of the, the Bold Coast Trail and all that. And here's the thing, if you talk to someone who grew up here all their lives, they don't want Lubeck to change. Their main complaint was, do not change our town. So you have two choices. You either go commercial and you do festivals and fancy shops, or you go outdoor experience and hiking trails. And as much as it may take forty thousand dollars a year off our taxes, the vision is that we will be a, a world destination for health for hiking and biking and canoeing. And it's not for the sixty-eight year old people that live here. It's for putting Lubeck, I mean, you got two choices. You either, or three, you do nothing, you go toward the commercial end, which I don't think we want to do, or you go toward the healthy. And, you know, that's, that's going to preserve the fishing and the small environment that we are.
As I get closer to these ages too, I would take offense to the fact at my age that I can't go walk out in those shoes. Of course I can. And if I can't, then I'm going to start figuring out how I can.
Look, he didn't have, his crew didn't have to take this approach. Forty thousand dollars is chump change. And we need that forty thousand dollars so that the townspeople, the government can make the decisions about what we need, the most urgently need. So it was an unnecessary slap in the face, in my opinion, pure and simple. You didn't have to do it this way. Yes, the town needs to pivot to a new economy. And it's working at it. And it's willing to work with him to do that. But, but for forty thousand dollars?
I think they're looking at the town, town being supportive.
Just don't understand where you people think that the economy is going to benefit from walking and hiking trails. I love them. They're beautiful, but.
Now, you're not lecturing me, are you?
No, but I'm saying, is it going to bring people here? Is it going to bring business here?
It is.
It is.
I would like to see, I would like to see the.
They're going to have to give attention.
Well, if you don't.
If you don't, Joanne, if you don't, if you don't try, if you don't try this approach, then you're going to get something else. Have you walked?
What alternative is there?
There's nothing. You do nothing. You sit there and you deteriorate. You go for healthy, um, healthy lifestyle and hiking and biking and canoeing. Or you go for, you know, trinkety kind of gimmicks. Let's dress up as witches. Let's dress up as this. Let's, you know, go.
The demographics are going to change in this town. There's no two ways about it.
There's, the chamber's spent years trying to figure out what would be the best for, you know, as far as our assets go. We, we did workshop after workshop and this was our asset. And he is, as a private individual, promoting our asset. I look, it looks like, you know, it's taking, I agree with, I agree with Jim that probably asking for the tax break is, was not the best approach. At least, maybe he should have said, we're going to take this thirty-eight thousand dollars off the tax rule, but we're going to spend twice as much on something that we need and maybe.
You know, what you guys are all talking about is, is a four month economy. There's twelve months.
That's absolutely right.
And the rest of us have to survive year round here.
Yeah.
So let's get something here that's twelve months.
But if somebody comes and spends five hundred thousand dollars building a house on the water, they are paying into our tax bracket.
It hasn't happened yet.
No, that's right. But I'm just, and do we have?
We need year round work here.
We need year round businesses. We need, and, and, yeah, and the beauty is already here.
Yeah.
The beauty is already here.
Yeah, we got to make that.
It is, it is a very, there are two sides to the story, Joanne. I can fight either side.
And aquaculture can still come and it's still environment and healthy friendly, but you're asking like, you know, we see all the time, let's get an L O B in outlet here. An L O B outlet's not coming here, ever.
It won't work either.
It won't work. A miniature golf course will never come here.
Explain to me how you're going to improve the economy by hiking trails.
Because people are going to start coming in in healthy environment. They're going to start hiking, like the marathon does.
It is seasonal.
We see homes getting bought. We see, you can't go down a road in this town without seeing a house being worked on. It's starting to pick up. It's starting to happen. I could sit there, you want to do nothing? Let's do nothing for the next fifty years. How's that working out?
Joanne's right in the fact that the, and so is Jason, the year around, there is a difficulty in figuring out
It's very difficult to figure out.
of year around person can be here. And Rachel's been working on the cable, high speed.
Fiber optics.
Fiber optics. And that means the cottage industry people can come, but to get, if you think you're going to get a bottling plan here or, or it's not going to happen. Because we're on a cul-de-sac ten miles in from a main road.
So hiking trails are going to bring them in?
No, no.
Oh, it's going to bring seasonal people.
It's going to expand the season. We can only see more people in September, a few people trips and into October. We can see a couple of people starting in June. It's, it's.
In fairness to Butler, there are a few entities that could be brought into town. You have a bicycle repair shop, that kind of thing. You could have a sports gear shop come in. It's not going to be a big thing. It's going to be a little thing.
To me, you guys are forgetting about the little people that have been here forever and ever and ever.
No, absolutely not.
Well, that's what it seems like.
Because this is what.
There are now seven restaurants here, but they don't, they're not here full time.
And here's, and you can go to every establishment here and every establishment in Matias and every establishment everywhere, and they're all looking for work. And everyone says they can't work. There's a work sign on every single establishment.
Everybody's hiring, right? Yeah.
So, and, and the, the season can expand. What happens is you get somebody and they come in and they open something and they're starting to work. But then they can't cut their lawn. So you get someone to cut their lawn, that's now their twentieth lawn. Now they need to hire somebody because they need another body. And then you get more people in the restaurants. They stay open longer. They need another cook. That's how it all starts to work and evolve. And that's how the people in town.
Thirteen hundred people cannot keep. You don't know this yet, but I, the other day, Renee and I, a couple of other people, filled out an application for, uh, for someone to come in and help us with various needs in town. And we mentioned fiber optic broadband, but that almost is not as important now as low income housing. And that's my next venture. I really think that's a big need in this town. And we need to have somebody come in here and help us with that.
Low income housing, isn't it? Because you're, you've got a waiting list, don't you, Joanne?
Yeah.
But ultimately, Jason's point of having year round, year round job of population, losing a high school wasn't helpful because you have to go twenty-eight miles and kid, people, you want young people here with children. So what are they going to do? And you want businesses here full time, but what business can be supported by thirteen hundred people? That's all there are.
We used to have twenty-eight hundred when we had.
I just don't understand how you think. We need to have young families come here, young families stay here.
Yes, that's it, but we don't.
What is, what is, what does this have to do with?
What's attracting them?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, fiber optic broadband is one thing, okay? And low income housing is another thing.
Well, this is.
I'm in that.
This particular project is not addressing year round business. I agree with you there.
But let's, let, I mean, Butler's been clear. Their goal is to attract the excess traffic, the still over traffic from Acadia National Park. Every year, approximately three hundred thousand people can't get into Acadia National Park because it's overlooked. All he wants to do is attract, you know, twenty percent of that or thirty percent of that.
Thirty thousand people.
Thirty thou.
They're already coming. I thought his main goal was these kids, to bring these kids in. He said he had four hundred and fifty kids last year.
That's the educational part. It's goals also to raise the taxes.
If you're going to create a, if you're going to create a customer base, you start of, of, of kayak minded, athletic minded, bicycle riding.
You tell me when they're out there in the middle of February, what they're doing.
Well, I understand, I understand. So it is a, it is a seasonal.
But the fishing industry has cut off every, there, there are quotas. You can't get a lobster license. You can't get a scallop license. I mean, that, you can't attract fishermen because they're, D M R and the scientists and the biologists are all kind of.
You just said you didn't want to do the tourism thing.
Pardon me?
You've just said that.
That I didn't want.
Well, no, she's saying it's two kinds of persons.
This is tourism. Hiking and biking is, is a huge, huge tourism. People do not want to go to a town that has nothing but, there's nothing to do. That's a different kind of people. There's certain kinds of people that want to just go and sit and shop and other people that want to.
During the winter, if he's got, and he's building these trails, you can cross-country skiing.
Yes.
Cross-country skiing does not cost you three hundred dollars for a lift ticket and then to get all the way to where you got to go. You can just slap on a pair of skis and go. It doesn't cost you, you have to buy a ski.
No, he is targeting tourism, but he's not targeting year round businesses. That's, that, that's thirteen hundred people can't do that. And the, the industry that, that supported this town years ago was fishing, but it's closed down. Almost every fishery is closed out. There's lotteries on elvers and on, I mean, you can get a wrinkle license, you can get a clam license still, but you cannot.
Bait is a dollar a pound lobster bait.
And they just reduced the sardine catch by eighty percent. So where they're going to get bait, it's going, we, we, I went to the Fisherman's Farm for three days and listened to the bait problem and looked at green crabs and all kinds of things. But it's just something has to change and it, it just, do you want to be known? Don't you want to be known for your beauty? All the wonderful people who grew up here, don't you want your town to be known for how beautiful it is? Because, I mean, I don't think they should take their, move the axe with a tax break right now. I agree with you. But I think what they're trying to do is, it's not, if you think it's self-serving, but for what? Someone who's in his, almost in his eighties? Self-serving him? I don't think so.
And I would like some guarantee from him or some promise that he would reinvest in the town. And I think we, that are right to ask for specifics.
So here, let me give you some bottom line on, on the numbers here. The, the mill rate last year was twenty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents.
And so if you take forty thousand on, what is it?
If, if everything stays the same with, you know, the, nothing changed except this.
Yeah.
The loss of thirty-eight thousand. That equals a point three zero mill increase.
So that's three cents a person. But we haven't got the school budget in yet.
Two dollars and twenty-eight.
Twenty-three, thirty cents.
Oh, point three, thirty cents.
It's thirty cents a thousand.
Thirty cents a thousand.
So it's thirty dollars on a hundred thousand.
Just to raise forty thousand?
Yes, thirty dollars per hundred thousand dollar average property increase.
Thirty, thirty dollars?
Yeah.
For a hundred thousand dollars of assessments.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I.
Which is, which is not terribly, you know, a terrible.
It's thirty dollars then for someone who can hardly pay their taxes anyways.
But still, if, if the trend continues and.
Exactly.
And, 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 you know, and if I crank in the, you see what this does is it, it undermines the top evaluation of the town, which then accelerates.
But why do we want the town evaluated higher?
Uh-huh?
We don't want a higher evaluation because we're getting less money from the state. Yes, you do.
Yeah, you do not want to get into a negative growth situation.
No.
Then you're losing it.
When you assess all of the properties, I thought we were like the second or third in the state for property values. And but we're not getting any money for the school. I don't know. It's complicated.
But there's lots of properties that are in fact exempted. We're not getting back to it.
So why don't we go around one more time? What would you like the, the Butler Foundation to do that would make you feel better about it, Jason? I think they're probably listening and would like to know.
No, I'm all saying, I said what I'm.
Do you just want to read the application?
Yeah, I want to look through everything and, and, I mean, lawyers, I'll get it a hundred percent in my office.
We do have to vote on that.
In my eyes, it is what it is.
It is what it is.
It is what it is.
And so we can either get upset or try to see.
And let me say, let me say one more time, Jason, so, so you'll understand. Every one of these, this is a, this is a standalone application for a parcel of land.
Yes.
A unit of real estate. Every one of these has the same cover page, the same body, the same, um, you know, the only thing different is that, you know, it has, every package is just like a phone book.
I understand.
So it means you only have to read one is pretty much the same.
Right, I just want to.
So he wants to read that. So we're, we're not going to, we can make a decision on the lawyer today.
Oh, yeah, there's no way.
So we need a motion to, um, table the applications for review till the next time and, and not to vote.
I, I wanted to just interject one thing.
Well, we're trying to make a motion.
I know, but.
Go ahead.
I'm not that I don't want you to, I just wanted to give you some additional information. Before you did, step over to that line.
Well, yeah, well, how much time? What, what is?
Mr. Davis and he's Matias, uh, believes that he's going to, I think they're going to turn you to challenge it.
And what, he's Matias?
Yeah.
And you're saying that not one, and that's what I'd like to look at. Has there ever been a case that a town? Bucket Davis, who's been the chair, the chair and the squad.
They're considering challenging, seriously.
Okay, but I, I think only a paralegal have, have probably enough knowledge to at least research some case law to see whether a town has ever won in the state of Maine. And I can do that.
The state has three million dollars taken on there.
And that, and that, that's another thing. I'm, I have three lawyers through E and P Buddy. And I know that they are top notch. And he has done his business, believe me.
Yeah.
And I, no way, shape, or form want to go up against those guys. I hire them myself, so.
I'd like motion to re-just move that.
Yes, I agree with both.
We'd have to, whatever.
I agree.
A vote on, on the, the tax base, on approving the, approving the application.
Just to approve the application.
Just let it go. Okay, we can do that. There's a motion on the, there's a motion to approve of the tax requests now, all sixteen of them. Do I have a second to discuss it? We need a second.
Second.
All right, so now we're up here for discussion. Jason was hoping to, with.
I just wanted to look at that, Matt, but we're not going to stop there.
Okay.
I mean, we're not going to stop.
So.
There's no way.
I, I would think it's reasonable to ask Mr. Butler to give us some specific, um, points that he could help us with. For example, the school.
I'm pretty sure what this, is what this letter was. I'm pretty sure that.
Well, he gave us, for instance, what he's done.
And he also gave the commitment to the fire department and the, and the.
Thousand bucks here.
I know, but I think he's left open requests.
Down the line, I would like to maybe be able to sit down with the organization maybe once every six months, but that's, and ask for that. But that's not part of this motion.
I think that they've also, I spoke to Carl before he went away out of the country and he said that he'd be, they'd be more than willing to sit in front of the select board, um, what would be a good time and that would, they would discuss what they could do going forward. They wanted to say what they have requested to give a presentation as to what they've done so far. And what should they do to help? So I think that would be the time when we would request things. And he's always said if there's something you really need, you can email him and he will run it by Mr. Butler and.
We really need a bus.
I can see the three million.
And a furnace.
I can see the, the three million dollar investment out there. I go out there quite often.
It's quite, I got a tour. They're opening it up to the town and we're going to.
I mean, I see the three million.
It's a hard, it's a hard request to swallow when you, people here work every day just to put food on the table and don't make.
I'm the only one on this board that's from here.
I know, and that's why we're.
I'm a native. And I know what it does to people. Not just this parcel and that parcel. It's the whole circumference.
The town is being cut up.
And if it keeps going on, you know, we're going to be a park. We're going to be a big Red Point Park.
Township.
You know, and, and we've already lost our high school.
But what's the alternative? Nobody being here? I mean, I, I, I don't know what the answer is. We've spent nine years now.
With the loss of the high school, that was ten years ago.
Right.
I have a, a secondary input that I'd like to share with people.
This is, it's got to be on the motion. The motion is, go ahead. We're discussing the motion.
The motion to.
Which is to approve. So go.
Yeah, and, and this, this supports that. Okay, so, go ahead. The day before these lands, I, I walked in and needed on my desk, the day before, um, I think it was like, that was a Monday. The Friday before I, I got an inquiry, I think it would have been like the Thursday before, I got an inquiry from a fellow named Mike Susi. And Mike, you know him.
And you know him.
And, and I've known Mike for fifteen years.
He's in that commercial assessor, appraiser.
Commercial appraising and he does all of the. He does commercial appraising and he does all of the big land trust deals for appraisal. He did, he did.
The Safe Harbor.
Safe Harbor project. He checked in with me and, and, and over the years, he and I developed a pretty good relationship. He, he trusts my numbers and I, I know he's, anyway. He called me and he said, Jim, I've got a, assigned a project by Mister Butler. We had a conference call, his crew, him, and I. The subject of the conference call was what can he do to, to help with that financially? Okay?
Pay his taxes, yeah.
Well, I told Mike that, I said.
Well, I mean, no, really, so.
But at the time, but at the time, I did it, no, this, this was in the mail. See, it wasn't, I hadn't seen it.
I mean, if it's that, if it's that dude was hard, why go through all this?
I.
Pay your forty thousand dollars in taxes every year.
I, I know, I know what you're saying.
You, you've heard me say that and, 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 you know, and I, I subsequently told Mike that, like, like this chump change. Why is this?
Really?
Why is his crew not, wh- why, why are they doing this? They, they were told by me personally out at the park, they asked me, Jim, what, just tell us what the town would like to do.
Pay your taxes.
And I said, we'd like for you to, until we make this pivot, until the town makes this pivot, just, just pay these taxes. They're, they're chump change. But anyway, he calls and he says, I'd like you to help me with this project. I go, what's that? And he says, well, Mister Butler would like to know the following. Because I go, and what, he told me what they were, I said, why do you want this? And he said, well, what he wants to do is attract investment to this town. And the specific investment he wants to attract are, are folks that he knows who may be interested in buying properties that are unoccupied, rundown, dilapidated, abandoned, whatever, that they could invest in, such as the quality dolphin.
Which would be fantastic.
To create rooms for people to stay in when they come here. To ride their bicycles, shops.
Yeah.
Businesses, think, and he knows, he has a lot, a, a whole, and Mike told me he has a.
Yeah, bicycle repair shop.
He has quite a, quite a collection of, 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 of friends and investors who would, if they.
There were some places that were preserved.
He said, if you put together the study, I, I have to do this study for him. He's commissioned this study. He wants the numbers so he can attract investors to properties. And he wants to know specifics about properties that need to be bought, improved, and made ready.
Yes.
If, if suddenly three years from now, suddenly there, a, 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 a cloud of people from Acadia descend on the town in a couple of years and ten or twenty thousand people come to, what are we, where are they gonna stand?
Yeah.
Okay. Total number of housing units, including apartments. What percent of the total number of housing units are seasonally occupied? Total number occupied and including apartments. Total number unoccupied, vacant, including apartments. Address of all unoccupied, he wants very specific, address of all unoccupied properties. Brief description of the property. Single-family residential, mobile home, apartment, multi-unit, et cetera. Condition of the unoccupied property. Assess value for each unit. For the units occupied, what is the total number that is in default on their property taxes? Amount of property taxes in default by property, provide property, dress and dollar amount in default. Specify the original tax amount that is in default and separately provide the amount of interest and penalty.
So he's doing a whole town, a commercial assessment? That's what they, he did it for Safe Harbor.
Total number of properties that have been repossessed by the town. Address of all repossessed properties. So he, Mike said, would you be willing to help me do this? And I said, well, sure, you know, I, I'm an assessor's agent. I, I can help you out with this. Well, I came in Monday and saw this on the desk and I called him up and I said.
Okay, now you know.
I can't do this now because.
Is it a conflict?
Put me in an adverse, uh, uh, relationship with this.
I could do it.
But anyway, he wanted this and, and, and it was represented.
Why would you?
Pardon?
All right, we have a motion on the table in a second. Uh, I, I, I see a, my mentor in real estate here in the audience. I would love to open this up. And Marilyn and Wanda, this is a, a serious decision for the select board to vote tonight. So would you have anything you would like to comment on? We'd like to have you weigh in if you want to. I don't want to make a decision with the five of us, with prominent citizens here in the audience that would like to say anything about their opinion.
Why does Mister Butler have all his men working with Jim Clark? For real? Why, why can't Mister Butler himself ask the questions? Get the answers?
Well, he did through his representative.
Well, I think the, um, the.
It might be a message to Mister Butler that people in small towns don't trust people who don't show up themselves.
Correct.
Correct, right. I, I, that's a New England thing, maybe Mister Butler's unfamiliar with that.
Isn't he?
Well, someone, you as the board's selectman mentioned it to him.
That what, well, he, personally, I believe, uh, he hires people to go out and Artie.
Well, you can go through maybe.
Artie's a main guide and. Artie Smallwood's been here.
This is data that in larger towns, assessors do create.
Yeah, right, yeah.
This is standard data.
Right, I, I think that, and, and Debbie would know that.
Yeah, and any good, I mean, I don't own my own agency anymore for a reason. Because I enjoy working with customers and clients and I don't give a darn about the administrative stuff. That's why I did what I did, because I'm better working with the customers and the clients. And Mister Butler has his visions and he has limitations and he hires people. Any good, smart business person, which I'm finding out, hires people to do jobs that need to be done, but it's not their expertise.
Yeah, correct, I agree.
So, you know.
So that's why he's not here.
And I do see, I, I believe Mister Butler has every right to do what he's doing. There's nothing we can do to stop it.
No.
They've had case after case after case try to fight it. Our issue has to be with the state laws. And that, I've been saying this for years, we need somebody in the legislature to submit a bill that gives some kind of compensation to towns that lose their tax base because of these things.
I agree.
I've, I've worked with this organization and they have paid fair market value.
Yes, they have.
For everything they have bought. They haven't gone after distressed properties. They, I mean, and there's a lot of that out there. They have paid fair market value for every single thing they bought.
And I'm actually surprised.
And, and, and a property owner has every right to sell to whoever they want to.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the.
Do you see, um, Margaret, the letter? Do you see that, that happening later?
Absolutely, I mean, we've all known that tourism is what's gonna make.
Yeah.
Or break this town. And these already people, I, this has been an extremely busy year so far for all of us. And, um, I have people who specifically want to be near public lands because they buy a house out on Straight Bag that's near Huckins.
Sure.
Huckins Beach, um, Hornhead, all those places. That's like owning all this land and not paying taxes on it, you know?
So I did hear from Greg as well, who's another Realtor accountant, who had said that there's, are the, that the, the, the real estate is moving now.
It, it is, and people are asking about the lifestyle. I mean, my company is named United Country Lifestyle Properties Maine because lifestyles are what people, even my age and your ages, are looking for today. And they are, the people that come here, and I've been saying this for twenty years, the people that are coming here are different than the people that come to Bar Harbor.
Oh, yeah.
They don't want the Schatzky shops. They, I mean, a few of them are good because they do want to bring home a souvenir, but they don't care about the fancy shops and the, they just want to enjoy the beautiful area.
Yeah.
And people that, you know, that are born and raised here are used to this. But for some people, they've never seen.
Anything like it.
Anything like this.
See, they'll, I have. This is like the old New England, and that's what I hear many, many times.
Right, and, and I think it's great that we have somebody coming to the area. He didn't have to give money to the Safe Harbor. He didn't have to do that. He didn't have to do anything with the, any of that money that he spent.
But why do that? He didn't have to do that, just pay your taxes.
That's, that's true, however, maybe.
Put more in the.
Maybe that is his way of seeing that the money gets spent.
On the, on his vision.
On his vision.
But look at the, the, I mean, granted, you can argue about the sidewalk. Right, I don't know, I don't know the, the ins and outs of it. Am I, I'm gonna guess that as a organization, um, five oh, whatever it is, it gives him the opportunity to invest and get grants and funding like he did with us for the side of the road.
Yeah.
You know, he can't do that when he's just a person.
Well, we still, that, that, that money from the D O T does have to come through the town.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
So it's, it's working and I, I'm guessing that's how a lot of this, a lot of this works.
I don't know, I don't know any law that concludes him from granting forty thousand dollars in lieu of as a donation tax exempt.
Right, that's true, yes.
Oh, absolutely true, which is why I say embrace what he's doing and support it and let the town become its healthy environment.
But it does irritate me because I'm the assessor, I'm the guy that's gotta sit down and run these numbers and it, and come and face the board and, 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 you know, and a lot of people in town think it's me doing causing trouble.
It's all you.
It's all your fault.
Thanks for taking responsibility.
So this is what I'd really like to see the town get involved with is trying to get something done statewide to give us some kind of relief.
So, right, if twenty percent of our, our beautiful land is then switched to land trusts all collectively, then we should get twenty percent taken off what we have to pay into the state. It's just what we do.
There are many, many, many meetings about that, Jim, and Carol and I went to one that they called people for support.
Look, today, all were answered.
So then that would solve the problem. That would, and that would allow, would preserve our land and also solve our tax problem. And I think Debbie, you hit the nail on the head.
The thing is, is we can have meeting after meeting after meeting over these, but nothing is happening.
And at the meeting that we need to, like, say, Jim said that you said, that we need to put it at the state legislature.
At the, at the state level.
Steve, Steve Presley from Whitey, I already went and saw the governor two years ago and started this.
Well, that was.
He was pretty much told no.
I went before the tax committee a few years ago.
We had new sheriff on the block.
You all remember, I went down and saw the tax committee and I said, and I stated, the problem here is not the land trust. The problem is.
Yes.
Tax policy is out of, out of whack.
Pretty well-known, great views down there.
It's tax policy, it's, it's there.
Your formula is way out of whack.
That's it.
Formula is out of whack.
We needed a new, new formula.
We needed a formula. So we have, Wanda did not get a speech.
You know, we have ninety-six waterfront acres here. How many of those acres are tax exempt right now?
That's, well, that would be a question, Jim.
What, what was the question?
Question is, out of the shoreland prop, out of the shoreland, ninety-two, ninety-six miles of shoreland we have, how much of it is held in.
Oh, I, uh.
We would have to really.
Over twenty now, look, the open space in classified lands amounted to little over eight million dollars in fair market valuation, okay? Actually more than that, but.
What's the percentage?
Jim, if I came up, could you look that up and, uh, tell me what it is?
You'd have to get a map out of yellow and all of the different, go all the way around the shore.
I remember.
Yellow and each thing.
I, the tax loss is right around three hundred thousand from one of, what you told us.
Yeah.
Yeah, the tax loss is right around three hundred plus.
The, the, the cumulative total of, 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 of land set aside in open states and otherwise exempt, not counting state lands, et cetera, et cetera, is about, I, I, I do a running tally yearly and it, it amounted to about eight million dollars. So this is five million.
But what's the percentage?
Yeah.
So that's thirteen million.
I hit.
One thing I will say is, wait, don't you get down on this floor. Don't get down on this floor.
Here's a, here's something.
And we really need to go to the select board meeting, it's still the assessor meeting. We need to, we need to make a vote.
Well, this is the assessor meeting?
Yeah, we're still in this.
We have to have this select board.
We actually, actually.
Fifty-fourth percent of the properties.
Do we vote as assessors?
Are owned by people from away.
I think we vote as board.
Fifty-four percent are owned by people from away.
Yeah.
Joanne, um, do we vote in the, as board of assessors on this assessment? And we have to come out and go to selectment? Okay, so we have, we're gonna come out of the assessor meeting now and you can stay for our vote. And we're gonna open up the select board meeting at seven oh five.
Okay.
Uh, we need to renew, we do that motion for the select, select board.
Motion was to accept, accept and bypass lawyer and accept the sixteen pieces of property.
Yes, it was sixteen.
Was it sixteen?
I'll, I'll second.
Of this, of the Coxco Shore, Shore LLC application.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I think we've had a discussion, so all in favor? Those opposed?
I'd like to, I'd like to offer another.
We're done, we really have to go to our regular select board meeting.
But I would, I, I would like for the board of assessors to, uh, send a letter to Mister Butler directly. I want to bypass his team and go directly to him. He is the sole owner of this corporation. Everybody else up there is an iron hand. Huh?
He's the sole owner of the Coxco Corporation?
Yes, and I think that, I think what that letter should say is that, look, we're rooting for you because the future of this town depends upon what you're doing. However, there are certain matters that come up from time to time, such as this, that involve really a, a minor piece of change for you. But in terms of planning and developing your plan and coordinating that with the town's part of the plan, we would like for you to incorporate a team member from the town into your corporate team, period. And to have a voice at your conferences and at your meetings.
That's a good idea.
That's a very good idea.
It does have a local person working with him.
Okay?
But you want.
Consistent presence that they, that his team is obligated to listen to and, and, and take into account because they, they did this, they're his team. He didn't, he didn't arbitrarily say that's tax exempt, no. They made this decision for a reason. They discussed it, and I think they did it for expediency and ease of control, that's all.
That's right.
And, and they, they, and quite often they'll make these decisions in isolation.
We really need to go on without me on.
But if you care about a town like he's claiming to care about, you pay your taxes.
You don't do this. And that's all I'm gonna do.
So.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay.
We, we, we need a, a motion to approve the warrants.
We have to open this up.
Yeah, I did, I did.
Okay.
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, let's get through this quickly.
More.
And we had something we had to sign. We need to sign these, um, the, remember the, uh, the, is the four? Joanne, we need to sign these things. Remember when the people that own the lots out there asked for exemptions?
Yes.
Maybe it's public records.
Yes, that's what I.
Anyway, um.
We are, did we make a motion, our most assigned?
We need to sign them.
Good.
Make a motion.
Motion's second.
All in favor, okay, so just sign them, because we've already agreed to the decision.
The warrants.
And the warrants at the same time. This page. This page, all they said, uh-oh, this is this one. There you go, dear. Perhaps not, this is just that page.
They're just the top page on that one, yeah, it was just a page, it was this back one, everyone's assigned. Now, on the motion for the minutes and the, um.
We didn't do that yet.
Oh, then the abatements, which one?
What abatements?
Uh, not abatements, that one there, the.
This thing here.
What supplement you mean?
I made a motion, and, uh, and Dan seconded, and everything said, everything was, uh, wrote. We need a motion to approve the minutes of April third, somebody that was here, second.
Second.
All in favor, we just, we can be all in favor, but we need to. All right, so Wanda has asked to go first, I don't think there's an, actually, there's one old business. I received an email, um, that, it's not a lot, but we did get from L M C a thousand eighty dollars that we were qualified, we got a little grant there, and it's gonna go to putting up a sign um, in front of the Safe Harbor project, and it's gonna have all of the people's names, so we got a thousand dollars to do that, and it's gonna be a permanent sign with plexiglass on all the signs of all the people that have given money for, and, and future, future space for the Safe Harbor.
Nice, perfect.
Exciting, yeah, so, uh, Wanda?
Oh, I just, well, Nene wanted me to come up with a fourth of July committee. There's basically three of us on there, and two of us are gonna step down as being on the committee, but Savannah will help whoever wants to come on board, and luckily, Joanne's gonna let us, you know, have a meeting at the yellow apartment, community building, and try to, you know, form a new committee. But Renee just wanted us to bring it to the board of both that.
Isn't there some kind of regulation that if you're a town committee, you need to meet up here?
Yes, yeah, you can either.
Oh, yeah, we'll meet up.
But if you're doing this, like, what, making things or putting a raffle together, that's different.
They can do what they.
And if it's a, if it's a not, they don't even have a quorum, and it's just trying to get people new involved, yeah, and that's. Sometimes it's a little bit intimidating.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's a nice room that you have over there, your community room. The chamber is taken advantage of it, and it's been really nice.
We're just trying to get, to try to get some interest in it.
Business, that might be the place.
And we all, I'd like to say too, every year, the same people do the same wonderful things that are born, but the committee, you know.
So the fourth of July committee is looking for volunteers to join the committee, and the contact will be, you can call the town office if you wanna volunteer, and they'll, we'll let you know when the next meeting is, you'll let us know. And, uh, that would be great, because that's something we have to keep going.
And, and Wanda, I, someday I'll talk to you, I'll call me, there's something I would like to tell you about the Hospital of the Library in downtown, and the fourth door, okay, but I don't wanna take that time now, yeah.
Well, thank you for all the work you've done on that, and being on the budget committee and all the other work, and sitting through our assessor meeting.
Yes, and the school board meeting, and everything else you've done today.
Yes, get to go home now. Okay, so the Coxco Shore letter, I, wait, I read the letter, I read that too, except, okay, so what's, I guess we got a grant.
Yeah, they're, that's the one they're still looking for, that's the.
So did we get it, did we get the money?
We got two hundred thirty-four.
That's, that subcon, that person got it, got it.
Oh, all of her.
Right, they're, they're still looking for more, but that's a start.
Great, so do we have to accept that? Okay, guys, we have to accept two hundred thirty-four thousand dollars.
Make a motion that we accept the R O B T P grant that we were awarded for two hundred thirty-four thousand five hundred.
Second, all in favor.
For us to start, yes.
Who seconded it?
Uh, Jason, the end of the work of slither license.
Not here, they're not here.
Uh-uh, you can't, you gotta have somebody here.
Road improvement bond proposition.
That's probably, that was the Butler letter, I believe. E-waste has begun, so.
E-waste has begun.
You gotta, you gotta make a motion to accept it.
Well, I, I moved that we accept the e-waste.
No, I'm at the road improvement. What about the, the grant that I wrote that, two thousand eighty, because we had to make a motion to accept that?
It's not in here, it's not in here, it'll be on the agenda, I don't.
No, it doesn't have to be, and it could be in other businesses.
Okay, well, it could have been told on, so it's not there.
Okay, oh, 'cause you, she's doing, we'll do it under other business. Okay, where are we at two, what do you want us to do?
Road improvements.
Number four.
Approve the road approval, and I make a motion, we, uh, accept the road approval.
How much is it?
A thousand dollars a year for ten years.
From what?
All in favor? Okay, Dan and Jason. Fourth of July, e-waste has begun, so what's the announcement for e-waste?
Bring it on down.
It has begun.
Okay, so all of your electronics that.
No point in attending the windows, windows is it?
Yeah, large TVs.
Accepting applications for cemetery mowers, we are accepting application for cemetery mowers.
Mowers, yes.
What is the pay rate?
The pay rate's eleven, no, no, recommend wage.
Okay.
Canopy Project, David Stockford, okay, so this.
ASAP.
ASAP, okay.
I'd say they stopped probably May, May eighth.
They do one hell of a job, they do a great job on these.
I need to check on that, because there's a grant that we're working for for the commercials here, and I wanna make sure. Canopy Project Grant, David's, uh, David Stockford is trying to get money for his project again, and they asked permission if he could use this grant that's coming up from the Department of Parks and Recreation. I want, I wanna make sure that it isn't a grant that we were trying to do for Harbor. Uh, I, it's not one we're doing for Safe Harbor, but it might have been one we're doing for the commercial beer.
Okay, I have a little information about this. It's the Project Canopy Planning and Education Grant, apparently David has met with a forester.
Okay, so that, that one's fine. But there's a different one that emailed me a couple days ago wanting to know whether it was gonna conflict with a grant that we're working on for Harbor, so we might be talking about.
Okay, two different things.
But we might be talking about two different things, so why don't we make a motion that, um, provided it's not conflicting with anything for the Harbor, we will give him our blessing for him to go ahead with it.
Yes, yes.
So we need a second.
So moved, so moved, yes.
Joanne seconded, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, nomination papers are available April twenty-sixth for what?
For selectors.
One selector, we've got two or three on the Board of Ed, you can, will we?
What do we have?
I don't know, what, come, come to Town Hall if you're interested in the position.
Is there a list here, what's available, school board, I know there's at least the.
There are two school boards.
Well, well, anyway, if you wanna be on a board, it should be a.
Working on supporting your town, come to Town Hall and see what's available.
I'd like a motion to accept the ten thousand eighty dollars.
Motion to accept the thousand eighty dollar grant for your sign, for your sign for State Harbor.
Will, whatever, what, whatever. For nomination, all in favor? Uh, selector, schooler, will those be on quality TV, will that be advertised? If, if, for instance, the select, the nomination.
It'll be on the town website as well.
Actually, here it is, it was right here.
There, I know it was there.
One position for three years for selectman assessor overseeing the board, two positions for three years for the school board, and one position for three years for the Lubec Water District, budget committee, one position for one year, one position for two years, and one position for three years. And there are three people on the budget committee, so that's the whole budget committee, maybe we can talk one of them that's on there and is running. Because what happened this year, we did not have anyone run for the budget committee, so therefore they were appointed, and when you're appointed, it's only for one year. So we would love to have someone.
They could run, yes.
Uh, Jason started his career in politics.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Serving on the budget committee for a year.
Yes, you did, actually.
And what's happening, you went right to the top.
You loved it. And you're very informative, was it not?
Honest, it is eye-opening, you say the least.
Did I say?
Because you see what's going on and how things are going up, up, up.
Uh, do we wanna do updates real quick?
Those people are being attacked.
So.
Updates real quick?
Oh, look, many updates.
Uh, A O, oh.
Go on, we're going down there.
I thought we were alphabetical, so I was going with A O S.
All right.
I was, I was a bad boy, I didn't make the last one.
Okay, so the Harvard Board meeting, I believe, is this coming Monday?
Twenty-second at six.
Yes, twenty-second at six. Joanne?
Um, June twenty-fourth is, um, Down East EMS meeting at four thirty. Um, we are having a special meeting on next Wednesday at twelve thirty in Charlotte, if anybody would like to.
And I understand Bobby is going to take your spot.
On the board.
Nice, well, that's perfect.
And he is perfect, and fire chief, and, uh, yeah, and, and that.
And he's been your alternate, right?
Yeah.
So he's been to the meetings.
Yeah.
Um, what about transfer, do, are you not on the different committee as well, you're on Marion Transfer, aren't you?
Yep.
Any meetings there, I think.
I went two weeks ago, and there was really.
Disruptive?
It really wasn't much, I mean, just all the weights are up, and, and from last year and the year before, but, I mean, that's running slow.
Do you need me?
So, when, when you're getting back on this, when you're.
That'll be my last meeting, the twenty-fourth.
Okay, I was gonna go to the end of the year.
So it needs to.
No, because they won't have another meeting until August, so I'll be, I'll be done.
Okay.
Dear Swan, Swan.
Hi, Swan. Rachel, Rachel Recycling Economic Development.
Yes, recycling, uh, met, and we were planning, unfortunately, we had the recycle meeting during the school vacation, so we could not plan with the school about the town cleanup, which will be the seventeenth and eighteenth of May. So we will meet again on the tenth, and then we'll wrap that up, and I will get with Tina to make sure that the school is on board before we do that. And in terms of economic development meeting, we had one here last week with Tom, Don Floellum and Tim McCaffey from Pioneer Broadband, it was a marvelous meeting, and you can see it on the Town of Lubec website.
I was on, all of a sudden, they came up and you were talking, and you were sitting in this chair, and I'm like, what is with the door?
That very chair. Anyway, they have come up with a dynamite idea, I mean gorgeous plans. They are applying for a three million dollar grant that is a federal grant, and it's a seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent match. Dean Preston and several people from the.
And Lubec's gonna be part of it?
We're, we're front center.
Oh, good.
Um, we, Dean Preston of the Unorganized Territories is part of it. Uh, I am trying to rope in everybody I can from the territories. Uh, lighting, we've got Mary Alice, look, there seems to be a glitch in the coupler. Uh, there is a, what, what are they called, a gatekeeper who will not give you access to the select board. So I'm wheedling around and trying to go in that door.
You'll keep us informed on that.
I will, but good plan, good, good things are happening.
What, R L F?
R L F, I believe, is five thirteen, at three o'clock, May thirteenth?
Yeah. And then you wanna tell us about the A O S, our proxy committee, how's that going?
Yeah, first I'll say our next meeting is May eighth, A O S at four P M.
How's that going?
It's, we're actually looking at some numbers, and of course, some of the numbers haven't been jiving from what we've been getting, um, from the A O S, so we're getting those corrected. Um, but we would love to have input from everybody and anybody to come down, this is a very serious and responsible is not the right word, what's the word I'm looking for? Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a big thing.
It is, it is.
Staying in A O S, I mean, it is a two million dollar budget, there are a lot of questions, um, whether, again, we stay in A O S or take over it.
Opt out.
And opt out and be our own boss.
Has anyone on that committee, the interview, people who have gotten off their own particular A O S?
Yeah.
And are they happy about it, are they?
They got numerous, Wanda has gotten numerous towns that she's contacted, and they've sent her, you know, letters of, you know.
We're, we're in the stages that not only are feedback, but okay, now if you're gonna do that, you know, now you've got payroll, you've got, you know, superintendence, and all the things that you've gotta take on, and so absolutely please come by, the more input, the better.
Yeah, and then you are gonna present a public hearing on your findings when it's done.
When is that gonna happen?
They're, they're, we have a schedule.
Carol, I do have one question.
Go ahead.
Debbie, how is the chamber coming along? I heard a bunch of good, good things, chamber commerce, I heard.
Chamber is getting.
The room was full.
The, the room was full, we had, um, they asked nine people to serve on the board, and all nine of us said yes. Um, we've already got a meeting coming up, I have, um, actually, I was going to suggest that Butler's group come and talk to the.
Business owners.
To the, to the, to the whole membership.
Yeah, very good idea.
And so, because that's what's going to be benefited.
Yes, that's a good idea.
And I was gonna bring that up at my first board meeting, um, so the chamber is.
That'll, that'll be your annual, um, you have to have one, one actual board meeting, because of the bylaws.
I think, well, right, I think, and we're redoing the bylaws.
Did you vote on the dues?
Yeah.
What are they?
Dues are seventy-five dollars, um, for regular businesses, and we're gonna take up a sliding fee scale for nonprofits. Because nonprofits don't have.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
Except for one nonprofit in Tampa, which I understand has quite a bit of disposable cash.
You had, you had a lot of.
Sliding up scale there.
Right, yeah.
You should do a sliding scale.
Yeah, that'll be a sliding scale going everywhere.
And like with my agency, I'm a member, and my agency is going to become a member as well, so.
I joined also.
It's a double.
And I'm just watching around, but I'll be, you know, joining.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, so do, is there a going, just board meeting, what about a membership meeting, is there another date for that?
Yeah, there is another membership meeting, and I think it's going to be, I don't remember the day.
So will you let us know, will you let the town office know?
We have, we actually, yes, and we actually have a Facebook page, I believe, now.
Yeah, yeah, there has been all along, a Facebook.
I would like to thank all you guys, because this chamber is darn important to this town.
It is.
Very important, and it's been dormant for way too long.
Yeah, yeah, but we had to have, the thing is, is it had to be gone for businesses to realize how important it is to get people involved.
I agree totally, you're absolutely right, yeah.
Carol tried her best.
Yeah, I think everybody's tried their best, and they.
Well, I got to do both, when I came over here, it just went and died, but anyway.
Yeah.
Um, it, there's a new resurrection, and I'm thrilled, and I'm glad it became a little bit carried, Chamber of Commerce, and I'm very happy for everyone. April twenty-ninth is Safe Harbor at six, that's next, that's two weeks from Monday, and, um, Shellfish is May sixth. So April twenty-ninth and May sixth is Shellfish, and we're, uh, going for ten million dollars for federal grant, and I'll be busy this summer, so I can't do anything else but try to write that, so.
So we're all felt on a boat.
Thank you so much, but you will.
We'll see how we can do, at least we've got a sign, we've got a vision.
Safe Harbor is such an important.
And that's a beautiful site for it, and, I mean.
It will be really a dream.
The town.
I did go to a huge cathedral, and that's the only thing I can think of when I lit my candle, Safe Harbor, yeah, I just. As Julie says, there's other powers working to help us, because one person cannot do it.
It's gonna happen, I'm telling you.
I hope so, I'd be brave.
And you talk about bringing more business, that Safe Harbor is really gonna help, really.
Can I add one more question I've brought out there?
Oh, I guess so.
We're a tiny little town, and I thought it would be nice if no one objects, I don't think you should add anything at the end, but during this two-week period, if anybody has a birthday or an anniversary coming up that they could contact the office, so that when we're getting ready to wrap up, we could wish that person or that couple, or something, an anniversary or a birthday, I think would be very appropriate.
Very nice.
And then we're a nice little town, and we should do nice little things like that.
Very nice.
I never knew you were such a romantic.
I don't have any.
Isn't that nice? A fisherman.
I don't, I don't have anyone at the, at the moment, so we have two weeks now, so next meeting, when we're closing out, we could announce any.
I think that's lovely.
I grew up with, um, who was the guy on the morning show, on the Today Show? That used to be the weatherman, he used to do that all the time.
Al.
Before, way before. He used to be like Ronald McDonald for birthdays, remember?
Yes.
It's Margaret's birthday, no, uh, next week.
What?
It's Margaret's birthday next week.
And if anyone out there asks to say Margaret who, well, then.